All right, folks, we're one minute after the hour, so I'll go ahead and call the June 9th City Council meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Um, welcome, everybody, and welcome to the members of the public. Before we get started with our agenda, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Ms. Trimble, will you do a roll call for us, please?
I will, just one second. Anderson?
Present.
Basara?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Colonel?
Present.
Farmer?
It appears absent.
Absent. Uh, Jones?
Absent tonight.
Jordan?
Present.
Nelson?
Also appears, no, he's online, yeah, thank you.
Online. Uh, Nugent? Absent. Savage?
Yes. Sorry.
Cheryl?
Present.
And Basika?
Present.
Right, we do have a form.
Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to our approval of minutes from June 2nd, 2025. Any questions or changes on those minutes tonight? Nope, okay. I'm not seeing any online. All right, those minutes will remain as submitted, thank you. Next, we move on to number three, which is announcing our committee's schedule for the, uh, this upcoming Wednesday, June 11th. Uh, and Claire, I know you said you do have an update for the committee's schedule.
We do have an update. The municipal court was not able to present their budget on Wednesday. They will be going the following week, so we will, we'll be starting a half an hour later at 9:30.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks. You all have another packed agenda on Wednesday. All day committee meetings. For members of the public, that information on upcoming committee, um, schedule is located on the City Council Agenda website. Okay, we now move on to special presentations and proclamations, and we do have a Neighborhood Council update this evening. We've got the Lower Rattlesnake Leadership Team Report. Looking forward to hearing that, so come on up now. Thank you, and I'll turn on the microphone for you, and if you'll say your name for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Robert Schultz, representing the Lower Rattlesnake Neighborhood. I'm here as usual to quickly and sweetly complain about the railroad noise as usual, but thanks to Eric Nelson and also to the City Council for at least keeping that issue on, if not the front burner, at least a burner. Um, I do want to emphasize that it is a significant problem, not only for the Lower Rattlesnake, but people climbing Mount Jumbo, people going up Waterworks, Greeno Park, Mount Sentinel, all the businesses south of the railroad tracks. If you go to any other websites, you'll find complaints about the railroad noise, the horns. So it's an issue I'd just like to keep out there. Uh, we, of course, need eight hundred to, um, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars still, and of course, a lot of bureaucracy and paperwork to be done before we can finally maybe get something done. Don't know about that. The other issue that we've been discussing in the neighborhood, uh, in the leadership team, is, uh, these two subdivisions going on in perhaps up on Greeno Drive. They've both been in the works often on for years, I know, but it looks like at least one of them on Cherry Gulch may make some progress. Uh, we are concerned that, um, if both of them go in, we're talking between sixty and seventy new residences. With that, we're probably talking a hundred more cars. Uh, we, there are only two egress points from the Rattlesnake, either Greeno Drive or Van Buren Street, so we worry about the emergency evacuation issues, and then just the amount of traffic, uh, people trying to go up to the, uh, Waterworks Hill Trailhead. There could be issues for them depending on where they put the road for this Cherry Gulch subdivision, but even without that, just the additional traffic and backing up, you know, if we have a train on the Madison Street Crossing, uh, there could be cars all the way up, backed up all the way to Lolo Street potentially, we think. So, uh, we don't get the idea that anybody has seriously considered the traffic ramifications of these two new subdivisions. Obviously, we don't want them there, but we're all nimby's when it comes down to it. And then another issue that a citizen brought to our attention at our last leadership team meeting was the sidewalk, uh, at the south side of the east part of Gregory Park. That's the part that's on the east side of Van Buren Street. Uh, the sidewalk is perhaps one of the worst in the city. It's all broken up. It's a bit of a hazard. It's used quite a bit, particularly during, uh, grizzly games, basketball or football. A lot of people park in that neighborhood and walk along there, and then anybody up Line Street or, uh, farther east, um, they use that sidewalk, and it is a hazard. And I think it could be easily fixed by the city since, I know sidewalks are an issue generally because ownership can be a problem, but I think that's an entirely city-owned sidewalk. It's on park property, I believe. Uh, there's no private property there certainly, so, uh, whether they want to tear it all out and put in a trail of some kind, or dig it out and repour some concrete, uh, this is where they just recently put in the memorial for the, uh, the Chinese graveyards around there. And that's what we talked about.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions, Mr. Schultz?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and, um, Mr. Schultz, if you did not already direct your neighbor, um, to the city's website, how do I? So, on the city of Missoula's website, there's a whole lot of hot links that you can go to that are a lot of questions people ask, how do I report a sidewalk hazard? So that's right on there, um, and that'll get to the right folks. And then also, I know that, uh, you're in touch with Counselor Nelson, and he could help you out there as well, but just want to make sure that you had a follow-up there in case folks were curious about how to get that moving, and of course, we can follow up internally here with our teams as well, let them know. Thank you very much for your, for your service to the neighborhood and to the city of Missoula. Good bet. Okay. That does wrap up our Neighborhood Council updates, uh, this evening, and we do have one proclamation, and that is for the United States Army Day. And so I know that Claire will get that called up as I start to read it here. So, whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established the United States Army, marking the birth of America's military and the beginning of its fight for freedom and independence, and whereas for 250 years, the United States Army has played a vital role in defending America from the Revolutionary War to present day. Americans have served selflessly in defense of the country. At the same time, army-led innovations and breakthroughs from radar and the internet to everyday items like wireless communications have advanced our national security, transformed global commerce, and propelled America's economic competitiveness. And whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of Army soldiers, veterans, and their families have ensured the safety and prosperity of our nation and the freedoms we cherish, and whereas our residents have a long history of serving in the United States Army, celebrated in ways like Missoula's Doughboy statue at the courthouse, immortalizing the sacrifice of Missoula's thirty-nine World War I soldiers, the Korean War monument, and Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Rose Park, and the ongoing presence of the U.S. Army Reserve and Montana Army National Guard at the Armed Forces Reserve Center of Missoula. And whereas the United States Army remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend, building strong ties with local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our great nation. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the fourteenth day of June 2025 as the United States Army Day, and encourage all residents to join in honoring the men and women who have served and continue to serve in the United States Army. And Counselor Campbell, I see that your hand is raised. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you bringing this proclamation forward. It is indeed the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Army coming up, June 14th, and as someone who's served myself for twenty-one years in Army Reserve and National Guard, just a shout-out to everyone who has served in the U.S. Army. It, it is the oldest branch of military service, by the way. Um, I have, um, a stepson, as you know, in, in the, uh, Army stationed out for Cavazos. He's a combat engineer, and then my son, Justin, a nurse, uh, First Lieutenant in the Army, serving down in San Antonio currently, so shout-out to them and shout-out to, uh, everybody who has served and continues to serve in, um, the United States Army, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thank you for your words and thank you for your service, Counselor Campbell and that of your families. All right, that wraps up our special proclamations and, uh, reports, um, and special presentations. So we will go ahead and move on to public hearings. We do have a public hearing this evening. We have Mr. Troy Monroe here from, uh, our engineer with planning to go ahead and present, present on item 5.1, which is resolution to create special lighting district number fifty-three, number fifty-four, and number fifty-five, Harren's Landing, Magnette Flats, and Hellgate Village. Mr. Monroe, when you're ready.
All right, thank you. I am showing, I'm sharing on my end.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
We see it, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review and Inspection. I am presenting today on creating three new special lighting improvement districts, which we commonly call SLDs. Missoula has thirty-three special improvement districts related to street lighting throughout town, as we show here on the screen. Throughout Missoula, there are thousands of streetlights, both leased and owned. I'll present a quick dive in why we are creating new street lighting districts. Streetlights enhance a city by ensuring public safety, improving traffic flow at night and in inclement weather, and supports community accessibility. Streetlights ensure public safety by improving visibility for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. And streetlights are a component of crime prevention through environmental design by deterring criminal behavior, reducing crime, and reducing the fear of crime. Missoula's history of streetlights go back to the nineteenth century, when on May 10th, eighteen eighty-eight, the City Council granted Abe Hyman and H.M. Ogden the right and privilege of erecting, maintaining, operating, and using in, along, and over any and all streets and alleys of the city of Missoula electric light wires. Hyman and Ogden's Missoula Electric Light Company was sold many times over the convening one hundred and thirty-seven years, eventually being sold to Montana Power Company and finally to Northwestern Energy, who leases most lights to the city. In 2019, the city hired consultants who evaluated the operation of streetlights, and at the same time, Northwestern Energy started a conversion of all streetlights to LED. The 2019 consultant report showed a significant cost savings in ownership of streetlights compared to leasing them. Additionally, the report showed there could be improved response time for repairs, a more uniform lighting standard, and more consistent coverage throughout the city under ownership, and the city could regulate the amount of maintenance for the streetlight system. We have shown the historic lighting districts and the need for street lighting, so let's get to why we are here. When the city of Missoula created the Missoula City Public Works Standard and Specifications Manual, we required streetlights to be installed with new development on arterial streets and evaluate streetlights on collector streets. Through subdivision review, all subdivisions in the Mullen area adjacent to collector arterial streets were and are being conditioned to install streetlights. By subdivisions adjacent to collector streets, we use special lighting improvement districts to cover the capital costs of designing and installing the required streetlights. Road District Number One will cover the operations and maintenance costs for these and future of streetlights on both collector and arterial streets. Three of those five subdivisions have recently installed the streetlights. They are now operational. Harren's Landing, adjacent to Chuck Wagon Drive, Magnette's Flat along George Elmer Drive, and Hellgate Village along Mary Jane Boulevard, a total of twelve streetlights have been installed. The remaining two subdivisions that will install streetlights in the future under SLDs for capital improvements are Forty-four Ranch and Remington Flats, both along Chuck Wagon Drive. Current projects and other subdivisions have recently installed streetlights in the Mullen area, including the build project at the roundabouts of George Elmer Drive at Mullen, Mary Jane Boulevard at Mullen, a city CIP project installed streetlights at Mary Jane and England Boulevard, and the West End Farms subdivision installed streetlights along England Boulevard. New subdivisions adjacent to collector arterial streets such as Weston Farms are including the capital costs of streetlights into their overall infrastructure costs and are therefore not going through the special lighting improvement district process. Additional streetlights will be installed in the future, completing lighting along Chuck Wagon Drive, England Boulevard, Mary Jane Boulevard, and Doherty Drive. The special lighting improvement districts are being created to pay the developers for the design and installation costs of the streetlights constructed adjacent to collector streets. The SLDs will pay the developers annually over a fifteen-year payment period. As shown here, the homeowner costs are calculated on the area of a parcel, lot, or tenant unit on a square foot basis, not including street rights of way or ownership of common areas. There is a bonding fee added at the time of district creation, and that fee was divided into the three SLDs based on district assessment. The calculated yearly assessment, shown on the right side of this spreadsheet, is placed on the tax rolls and paid by, unpaid on the annual, biannually property bill. These yearly assessments are similar to existing special lighting improvement districts. It's been three decades or more since the last special lighting improvement district had been created, I'm told, so this process is new to us. What I show here is the process we have been following with step seven, where we are currently, council approves a special lighting improvement district. If council approves the creation of this districts, the SLDs will be created, and property owners will see the assessments on their next tax rolls. Developers will see their first reimbursement about a year and a half from now. Included as attachments to this agenda are all of the individual district information, a memo covering the aspects presented today, and official resolutions for each of the three special lighting improvement districts. This concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Monroe. Any questions for Troy? Yes, Counselor Basika, please.
Um, so are, are the houses currently, are the properties currently, um, owner-occupied, or is it a new development out there?
So, um, in the three districts, most of the districts have, are almost completely built out. The only one that's partially built out is Harren's Landing at about fifty percent.
Okay, were the, um, property owners, were they given notice of the intent to create a SLD?
They were given that as part of this process, so they were sent letters, uh, about two weeks ago when council approved the intent. Um, we do not have any prior, uh, knowledge to that.
Oh, and one more. Um, have you received any pushback from any of the property owners?
We have not received any official, uh, communications or petitions, and our most recent check with the clerk, they have not received anything either.
Okay, thank you.
I keep your questions. Any others? Or I'm not seeing any, any other questions here. All right, excellent. Well then, Counselor Basara, I think we'll go ahead and hear the motion, please.
All right. I recommend that we, I move... That we approve a resolution of the Missoula City Council to create special improvement lighting districts, SLD number fifty-three, currently known as Harren's Landing, Phase W-1, SLD number fifty-four, currently known as Magnette Flats, and SLD number fifty-five, currently known as Hellgate Village, as described in Exhibit Eight, District Boundary. The intent of the resolution of the Missoula City Council levying and assessing a special assessment and tax on the lots, pieces, and parcels of land situated within the district boundary of the city of Missoula, Montana, over a fifteen-year period to defray the design, construction, and installation of street lighting in the special lighting districts number fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, this opens the public hearing, so motion is on the floor. Public hearing is open, and we'll now open it up to public comment on this agenda item. If there's any, if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item. Not seeing any in the room here. Is there any public online that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Okay. I'm not seeing any public comment online either, so that closes the public comment, brings it back to City Council for any additional questions or comments. Questions or comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, Counselor Campbell, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, um, generally, I'm pretty apprehensive when it comes to new additional tax levies, um, uh, with, you know, everything going on with the cost of living and tax burn as it is, and, uh, our budgets yearly. You see double-digit tax increases, and here it is, another assessment, but in this particular case, you know, I, I think lighting's important, and I think it is a great public safety benefit, and it's an assessment that you, you could, you know, point precisely where that money's going, what it's being used for, and very precisely, as opposed to, you know, assessment for your parks district, your roads district, or just general fund levy, you know, it's kind of ambiguous, you know, what it is a city actually does with that money from year to year, but this is very specific, very targeted. I know where it's going, know what's being used for, so, you know, for this particular case, I'll be in support.
All right. And thank you for your comments, and as a special assessment, special lighting district, of course, that does differ quite a bit from a general assessment by like a parks district. These, um, I'll just add to it that when the developer, um, made the choice, the property owners did sign a waiver, uh, knowing that they would be, they would, they would be basically, um, by, you know, uh, participating or being asked to participate in this lighting assessment, a special, uh, improvement lighting district. All right, any other council comments? Okay. Not seeing any then, so that does wrap up that section of the public hearing, and Ms. Trimble will take a roll call vote.
Right. Voting this evening on item 5.1, the resolution to create special lighting districts fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Colonel?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Mil, Mills, Eric has a sign up saying he votes yes. He is unable to unmute his microphone. I can't pin him, but I know he made a sign.
Savage? Oh, she absent?
Yes, uh, Counselor Savage is absent.
All right, that was mismarked. Cheryl?
Yes.
And Basika?
Yes.
Great, that's in favor, and that motion does pass.
Okay. Thank you very much. That wraps up our agenda item. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Monroe. Appreciate the presentation. All right, that wraps up our public hearing then on that special improvement lighting district, and that is our only public hearing this evening. Uh, we have no new business, and so we'll move right to the consent agenda, and so Ms., uh, Ms. Trimble will put this on screen for folks participating in the meeting via MCAT, and those in the audience can see it up on screen, and will hear each item that has previously been approved in city council committees. And we go ahead and vote approval on this consent agenda to save time at council meetings, and then we'll take public comment afterwards. You're muted there. Claire, you're muted.
There we go. All right, I did want to note that we have one correction on tonight's consent agenda. When we get to item eight point seven, it says set a public hearing for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. That hearing, public hearing, will actually take place on June twenty-third. It is correct in the, uh, resolution and on the various notices that went out. It's just in the motion that we accidentally got the date wrong, so, um, that is, has been properly noticed, and we will, um, correct it when I get there. So, beginning tonight's consent agenda, we have a, a motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated June tenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eight hundred forty-seven thousand, forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement between the City of Missoula Parks Recreation Department and the Missoula Downtown Found- Foundation and the Missoula Downtown Association for the replacement of the Karis Park Pavilion Canopy and painting of the steel structure funding and project management. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with WGM Group, Inc., in the amount of ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars to provide professional design and engineering services for the Fort Missoula Pond's Bitterroot River Restoration Project, Riverbank Restoration Project. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with JAG Contracting LLC in the amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars to provide contractor services to construct the Clark Fork River Access and Restoration Projects. We have a motion to award the bid for Philip Street Water Main Replacement Projects to Williams Civil Construction at a cost not to exceed two hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars, and to authorize return bid bonds. We have a motion to set a public hearing for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and adopt a resolution of intention to vacate portions of Roundup Drive right-of-way, shown as Exhibit A in the attachment. We have a motion to set a public hearing for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and adopt a resolution of intention to vacate the twenty-foot-wide east-west alley in the block of twenty, in block twenty of the Knowles Edition, number two, a recorded subdivision in Missoula County, Montana, located in the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-One, T dot one-three north, R dot one-nine west, and shown in Exhibit A, um, and subject to the conditions of approval. We have a motion to approve the resolution related to the financing of the proposed parks and recreation improvements, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code, which is a two-point-one-million-dollar north-side pedestrian bridge and other projects reimbursement resolution. And finally, on our agenda this evening, we have a motion to set a public hearing for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, to consider the resolution for the second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-five amendments to the annual appropriations.
Okay. Thank you very much for reading those out loud. For the record, do we have any public comment on items on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any in the room here. How about online? Public comment tonight on the consent agenda? No public comment online. Do any council members wish to separate any agenda item on the consent agenda? All right. Not seeing any there, then we can do a voice vote on this item, please.
All right, on this evening's consent agenda with the correction on eight point seven included, please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
Okay. Great, thank you, Ms. Trimble. We, um, will move on to regular business, of which we have none, so we have no, uh, agenda items under number nine. That brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. So come on up to the microphone. I'll go ahead and help you keep track through this handy-dandy little machine here.
Big T, Montana, with some reference to the emails that you've been getting this last week on last week's proclamation. From what I've got from somebody formerly of the North Korean Russian Embassy and China consulate, which would be eleven-ten West Broadway and Nineteenth-Ninth North Ave. The individuals that you were talking about actually are employed, are the ones that literally raped and raping my integrity, let alone identity as they used back in the day of Edgar Hoover, which is the equivalent of malicious intent of defamation. And I remember March sixteenth really well, and I told somebody at the library security, if I would have gave the appropriate response of the equivalent as him, he'd have lost he'd have lost his grip really well. So how ignorant am I to the fact of the matter? You got a comrade in this building that expected to me that I actually told him that that individual, which I called the kingpin, threatened me several times, and the emails went out to Jill Bonney and a whole lot of other individuals back then. Here we are. That tattoo that I received on that federal existing bus that you can't touch, nor the city attorney. It would be nice to have him. I want that jury trial, and I will force the issue better than last time I asked for a jury trial in regards to the stiffening of the public safety and the city, its attorney office and OPD. Let's change the subject to this wonderful problem you got in the city that's gonna haunt you with some heavy dollars. It's called road repair. It happens to get worse if you don't get on top of it, and the dollars will get heavier to the fact of the matter. Do I make myself understood? I ride around on this bicycle as a bicyclist. I wonder how many other people realize the detriment they could drop into a crater or questionable road services riding bus and bicycle. I don't need geriatric bicycle training lanes to ride bicycle. I can ride bicycle really well controversially and do better time and be a whole lot safer. So what have you learned in the last year of the stabbing of my tire, which I considered the assault on myself, and everybody spit in my face and gave me my, their finger, middle finger to the fact of the matter?
Thank you, Mr. Montana. Other public comment? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Susan Campbell Renaud. I live on Martha's Court, at the corner of Garrett and Martha's Court in the city. I stand before you this evening in strong support of the official American POW, MIA, and Montana flags that honor the symbol of our country and our state, as well as honoring military personnel who ever came home during conflicts, defending our country and our freedom. I oppose your decision last Monday to make another flag, the official flag of Missoula. No other flag, especially any flag that symbolizes a controversial topic or political viewpoint should ever be flown above any official government building with it, um, that represents all Missoula residents. I would oppose a do-not-dread-on-me or a MAGA flag, as well as any flag that excludes other Missoulians, since the flags that officially fly over our government buildings are those that represent all Americans, and the other flags represent minorities. I would passionately express to you that no strong political statement through any flag should be deemed official for the city of Missoula. The American POW, MIA, and Montana flags represent all of us. Our city, state, and nation are made up of thousands of viewpoints, as well as all races, ethnic backgrounds, political backgrounds, and sexual orientations. Those differences are what makes our United States of America so special and unique. If we lived in some countries in the world, people expressing their viewpoints on any, anything contrary to the official government viewpoint would be killed, injured, tortured, and banished, but not in America. That is why the entire world of humans want to come here, except for a minority of criminals who want to harm and destroy us. My ancestors served in the Revolutionary War and the Civil War to preserve those freedoms. Abraham Lincoln stood up to states that supported slavery and wrote the Emancipation Proclamation to free those slaves. The Fourteenth Amendment of our United States Constitution further freed all people in America from slavery. Abraham Lincoln found bound generals such as Ulysses S. Grant willing to defend our United States of America and dedicated the Gettysburg National Cemetery to the words um, that we all know from the Gettysburg Address. "Of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth."
Thank you, Ms. Renaud. Other members of the public wishing to make comment? Come on up.
Carolyn Slidwell, thank you for your recent handwritten note to me. It was lovely. Thank you for your service. It's an honor to be here. It's exciting. But I, I am here because of a decision that was made that I would like to propose an enhancement to that decision. Um, I looked up really, is this the right place for me to be? And, uh, the city council, as you know, I read about all the responsibilities, and I'm going to focus on number five that says representing the interests of the constituents, and I'm a constituent, and I have an interest. So I do wonder if perhaps the recent decision about the pride flag was a good one, because did we all consider unintended consequences, but perhaps we can make something positive out of that? You know, I was reading, um, on the resolution, um, recognizing the pride flag, whereas, blah, blah, with history, we want to recognize the history, resilience, contributions, and oh, all of that is perfect. But you know, in the United States, the, the percentage of LGBTQ citizens is, um, about nine-point-three, whereas about sixty-two percent are Christian. Now, what I want to do is see a flag that says, whereas, um, the Missoula City Council recognizes the Christian flag as an official flag. Because of all that, um, has been done for our country, if we look at your resolution, it goes down to whereas the Missoula League Council seeks to, to memorize, memorize the pride flag as an official flag, um, affirming the city's commitment to inclusivity, diversity, and recognition of LGBTQ residents and visitors. Well, that's exciting. I want to be recognized. We, we know what the, um, Christian community have contributed lots, but let's just say to our own community, this can be done, because in Boston, the, the case of Shirtlift versus City of Boston, if you, um, have any interest, you could see that in that case. Boston had a flag pole program that allowed private organizations to temporarily raise flags. Um, the Christian flag at first was denied, but the Supreme Court disagreed, finding that Boston's flag pole program created a space for private speech. There is, therefore, a municipality can accept a Christian flag. Though perhaps there were unintended consequences out of the goodness of, of those that voted for that. It, it was all done with good intent, but I, I would like to say I wish that wouldn't have been done. I think it was controversial. But if that is going to be done in, under, under these, um, ramifications, I want to be included. I end with telling you that a couple of days ago, I left St. Patrick's Hospital, and I crossed Orange Street Bridge, and I, um, the first stoplight was out, and it was very busy. But, um, traffic all four ways, they'd stop and let the next two stop and let the next two go. And then I got up to the second traffic light. It also was out. Stop and let the next two step. The third one was out, all there along Orange Street, and I thought to myself, you know, if we all acted like Christians, if we all did unto others, we wouldn't need stoplights. We wouldn't need police. We wouldn't need laws, because
Please wrap up your comment. You're well over three minutes. Please go ahead and wrap up.
Because let's all do unto others as we would like done to ourselves. And for me, I would appreciate it if you would consider that, um, include me in, in the diversity and inclusivity of what this city represents. Thank you. I'm sorry, I extended.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on pub- on items not on the agenda this evening?
Hi, uh, my name is Savannah Geary. Uh, I was here last week too. Um, I'm a queer Missoulian, and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for all of you who did vote to make the pride flag a, um, official flag of the City of Missoula. It really does mean a lot, um, not necessarily insofar as like, it means a lot in terms of we are living in an environment where, uh, nationally, there are groups that are under threat. Missoula has always been a very vibrant place that is welcoming to everyone in a way that, uh, is being threatened in other, other ways, other places, and it shows that, like, the leadership of Missoula is willing to protect its citizens against questionable things happening elsewhere. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Other public comment, please?
Mayor Davis, council members, thank you for your time today. I, um, I wasn't gonna speak. I was here. I'm really grateful for the proclamation for the Army today. Thank you for doing that. They do a lot for us. Um, you know, Missoula, my family, I come from homesteaders, and Missoula has historically been a place that has held every cultural group that has come in and discussed how we all can work together to most efficiently utilize the resources of the community. So historically, Missoula has had people hold space for lots of different cultures to come in, sit down as they are, be where they are, and the people within Missoula has historically explained how to efficiently use government, um, and how to efficiently work together so that we can all sustain survival the best as a community. And so, um, we have gone through a lot of things within this town, holding space for a lot of cultures and a lot of transitions and a lot of differences, and at the end of the day, um, this is a moment where we are holding space, and the people that have been here for a long time, we understand that there are groups of people that are learning how to most efficiently work together and share resources so that the most of us that can possibly survive and thrive together can do so, because when we all start questioning everything and debating everything, uh, it takes away our ability to, uh, share resources at an efficient rate, because at the end of the day, if we share resources within a group of eight compared to a group of sixty, sixty people are able to survive over the eight. So those are the things that different cultures have sat with and learned how to teach through the different local government structures, and sometimes it just takes a moment for us to realize that everything is just a different group of people coming together and learning how to talk together about how to share our resources and be efficient and all get along without running into each other. So, um, I do know that the, uh, use of flags is only to communicate the structure that is underneath the government, because at the end of the day, we don't all speak the same language. And so when people show up, I mean, over in the United States, we're really coddled and sheltered, but when people show up to different countries and want to know what's going on, a flag is a visual that says, this is what to expect, and these are the things underneath of it. And so it is a government visual of the policies, policies and the procedures that go, uh, with the community so that we can protect people. So thank you for opening that discussion, Mayor Davis. I am so grateful for you.
Thank you, Ms. Atanastoff. Thank you for your comments. Other public comment tonight? I'm not seeing anybody else in the audience here. How about online? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Folks online tonight? All right, I'm not seeing anybody online there. All right, that does wrap up our public comment on non-agenda items. I want to thank folks for coming down this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. This brings us to our next item of business, which is, uh, communications from the mayor. Um, I just have a couple of things, and sorry if, if somebody else is about to make this announcement, because it's probably something on the top of a lot of people's minds, but fire danger has been moved to high. What were you gonna say? I knew you probably were. I bet. So I don't mean to take it away from you. You, maybe you could read the announcement. Okay, good, good deal. Um, I do just, you know, want to make sure that folks do recognize that, um, with fire danger moving to high, there are some actions that go into a place. Outdoor burn permitting has been closed, and, um, most fires are human-caused, so we have the ability to control this. Um, and we just ask everybody to be very careful out there. We're in a situation where we're on June 9th. Um, we've got, um, increasing temperatures and low moisture. It potentially could be, um, a hot, dry, and smoky summer. I know most of us enjoy the clear blue skies that are out there during the summer season, and sometimes we can't control what Mother Nature does, but what is in our control is being very careful out there, and I would encourage all folks to do so, please. Thank you. Um, also, if, um, please feel free to check back on the City of Missoula's website as well as our social media. We, um, and the City of Missoula's Fire Department consistently puts out information for the public, um, in terms of, um, the, the current, um, uh, fire danger and any closures that might be anticipated, um, as a result of that. Next, I just wanted to mention a really couple of cool community events that I was able to participate and give some folks some shout-outs. So last week, the Hope Hospice Center opened their, um, well, it was a grand opening. It was a dedication ceremony, so I don't believe anybody is actually um, in the space yet, but this is, uh, partners, Hope Foundation and, um, in partnership with Partners in Home Care. And this is where folks will be able to go spend, um, their last days, and because it's a foundation, they're also raising dollars to help folks that don't have any means, that don't have the financial means to be able to pay for end-of-life care, um, in this facility. It really is an exceptional, um, beautiful facility. It's located between Home Depot and, um, near AMC Movie Theater. It's a beautiful space. A lot of dedicated community members saw that through, so it's, it's really wonderful. Just wanted to say congratulations to those folks. Um, and then if you have a chance to go down and visit an exhibit at the Missoula Art Museum, there is one, um, showcasing the work of, um, Brian McGuire, who is an Irish artist that has been working with indigenous families in Montana and this entire region for about five years, meeting with folks and hearing their stories of their murdered and missing indigenous relatives. Um, it's a very moving exhibit and incredibly impactful. Uh, I would encourage folks to go down to the art museum where it's, uh, free, uh, to be able to see the artwork there. Um, and, you know, to continue to make it so these people are not forgotten, their memories are not forgotten. Um, so it's, it's really something. And then last, uh, opportunity to take part in the Chinese Cemetery interpretive sign dedication and ceremony, and, uh, Councilor Carlino, um, largely spearheaded that work. It was a great community celebration. We had a number of people there. Um, so that was very cool to see that, and so it's, uh, lots going on in our community, and it's always nice to be able to recognize folks that have been making, um, an effort to, to see things happen here. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to council comments, and, and Council Carlino, I'll start with you.
Thanks. Um, I'll pass tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Council Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick comment about, um, the decision we made last week. I think it was a good decision for a variety of reasons. Um, the first is that, um, we had a legislative session that actively tried to pass laws that specifically targeted our LGBTQ plus community, um, and labeling them as, um, sex offenders and pedophiles, um, which is inherently untrue. And I'm really happy that we are taking a stand as a city, and I know I've talked to you a little bit about, um, local control, and I think this is also a really good example of local control where, um, Missoula City residents have spoken, and the state has told us that we shouldn't do something like this, but in an effort to maintain some form of local control, we are, um, deciding to, to have the pride flag be one of our official flags. And for both of those reasons, to protect a very marginalized and vulnerable and targeted community, and to also maintain local control in Missoula City, I'm really happy that we made that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jordan. Council Basika?
Thanks. I just wanted to quickly add to the fire danger. Um, when folks are towing their boats, be careful that your chains are properly, um, When folks are towing their boats, be careful that your chains are properly, not dragging on the ground because that does cause sparks and a lot of fires are caused that way. Thanks.
Great reminder. Thank you very much. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll pass.
Okay. Councilor Becerra?
Pass, too.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to come around this way. Councilor Cheryl?
I'm going to pass, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Anderson?
Thanks so much. Appreciate you bringing up the fire danger. I was going to, but I think really important to reiterate the fact that the majority of wildfires are human-caused. So if you don't want to have to spend the summer inside, take extra caution. And, you know, we all know the sayings, the water, the feeling of the, all of the, it's all out there. And just do it for all of us. And because I don't want to spend the summer tonight and I know you don't either. And so just super important because it is, I was heartbroken when I saw the email come out today that we are moving and I was like, it is the first week of June. June is supposed to be a rainy month. So appreciate that. I want to reiterate that. Finally, I want to just put out another community plea, I guess, that my first one was a community plea, that I know this Saturday, there is going to be, you know, quite a bit of activity around various things happening nationally. And I think one of the, you know, it's appropriate tonight that we acknowledged the, the Army and its two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary and all the rights that we are given as Americans. And one of them is to peacefully assemble and protest. And I'd really like to reiterate the peaceful part of that. We all have varying views on things and can engage in spirited and lively debate. But I just encourage everyone who's out and about exercising their free speech rights this weekend to do it peacefully, not to cause damage to property and put people in danger and really go against the tenants of, you know, what my ancestors, who came over on the Mayflower, were really coming to seek here in this land. So just, I guess I have two public pleas for the folks today. And that's it. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Anderson. Any council members online wishing to share some council comments? Not seeing any, anybody pop up their screen. Councilor Nelson, you could. All right. A second here. All righty. Great. Thank you. All right, well, that wraps up our general comments from city council members. That means that we have made it through the agenda relatively quickly tonight. I did see a member of the public join us. You may have thought that maybe there's a public comment opportunity. If there is, we've already gone through our public comment this evening, but we have a pretty quick agenda. If you want to come up and share your public comment, you're more than welcome to. Yeah. Not to put you on the spot. And come on up to the microphone, if you would, and please say your name for the record.
I'm loud. I thought I didn't need a mic. I just want to sincerely thank you all for making the pride flag the city flag. And I know some people don't agree with it. To me, a rainbow flag represents all people, heterosexuals, gay people, you know, everyone, not just the L G B community. So may I give you something? I want to give you a band. I don't have them for everyone.
Yeah, please go ahead and give it to the officer and he'll make sure he hands it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you share your name for the record?
Mark Haga. I've lived in Missoula twenty-six years and this is by far the coolest city in the country. The only other, Lawrence, Kansas comes close. I think that's where I might retire. But this is a, I remember being in this room in 2010 when I think Missoula was the first city that added nondiscrimination, homosexual, well, sexual orientation to the nondiscrimination ordinance. This is a cool city and you guys represent wonderful people. So thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down and sharing your comment. Really appreciate that. And thank you for the bracelet and the pin. Thank you. All right, so we have wrapped up our, our agenda this evening, although people are continuing to come in and I just wanted to see if, I, I normally don't allow a continued public comment afterwards, but just double-checking, is there any burning items? Okay, all right. Well, that does wrap up our, our council agenda. Enjoy the air conditioning while you're here. Thank you, everybody, for a meeting tonight and we are adjourned. Thank you.